We probably should have given him a volunteer certificate, huh?
I gave him a beanie.
I got a beanie.
I gave him a beanie and a cup.
Okay. Okay, so we'll.
Okay.
Yes, yes, okay, all right, so that is tomorrow evening, the ceremonial items.
And then, um, the mayor, when she does the ceremony, she's, you know, she can always invite anyone to come along. I mean, she always usually says, if you're available, come out, so.
Okay, then, um, the consent calendar, do you want to walk us through those?
Where do we have them?
Or F? Yeah, or I'm sorry, I apologize, F is the ceremonies, tomorrow night will also be the ceremonial swearing in of the patrol officer. So it looks like it's, is it Aaron Mayo, is how you say his name, and will he and his family be here?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great.
And then, so, it's anything you, you're in ceremonial slate, then we take a photo with the council.
Perfect.
Yes, yeah, and did you all see the police chief in the paper?
Yeah.
Did they deliver that? Did you see that nice picture of you in the paper?
Oh, I did, yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Always look at what I get the paper.
And then, um, the picture that y'all took on the steps with all our volunteers, they did that color.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they raised a little better than the chief, they ran this in black and white, like your police cars.
All right, good, and then we'll have the consent calendar, um, after the ceremonial items, so we'll have the bills, and then we've got the approval of the ARPA spending plan.
Yeah, so you want to slow down a little bit there, so whoever you are, finance director, uh, the bills is pretty straight, but I know, I know you want to rock your roll, but I want to use a little, little pockets.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, so in December, the council adopted a plan for spending the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the ARPA money. During fiscal year twenty-three budget development, though, um, we've identified a number of changes that I'd like to present and propose, um, amending that plan this evening, or tomorrow evening. Uh, the first and most significant change is reallocating the five hundred thousand dollars set aside for renovating the community center and moving that to the pool improvement fund. This would allow for all three phases of the pool improvements to be completed and address any other needed improvements that could arise. Staff will seek grant funding for other revenue source or other revenue sources to complete the community building rehabilitation. The next proposed change takes some of the funds set aside for the community resource officer, and also the remainder of the unspent hazard pay funds, and we're proposing to transfer that to a community services officer position. It would be for a half an FTE, full-time equivalent, for approximately seventeen months. And then the last two proposed changes are changes to descriptions only, and one would be to revise the homelessness initiatives to include purchase of a CRO vehicle. And the second revises the police vehicles to include a car for the captain instead of another patrol car, and that's because we've just offset, um, by adding a CRO vehicle through that homelessness initiatives. So if approved, there is no overall change to the total of the spending plan. This proposal just moves money from one line item to the other, and staff is recommending that council approve the revised ARPA spending plan to incorporate these proposed changes. And there are copies in your packet, so you can compare the original to the revised.
Okay. Kind of questions does the, does the council have on these, um, adjustments and the revisions in the American Rescue Plan, spending plan?
So that five hundred thousand for the community center will just be moved over so we can finish the project at the pool?
At the pool, correct.
You get it reopened?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's my.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there other questions? I, I just want to emphasize a couple things. So, uh, first, um, the police captain is using a loan vehicle from SINT. So, uh, the vehicle's in such bad shape, but, so, we don't own that vehicle, we got to get it back to them. So, um, the second is, is, um, you see community service officer, community resource officer, you'll hear more about those obviously in the budget, but it's something that, that we have been talking about, so when we did the last year budget, um, we, we actually had budgeted for someone in the police department to do code enforcement, and that never happened. This is going to make that happen, but also what we're trying to do is take the non-certified law enforcement duties that can be done by civilian person and put that in that role, um, so that they can go out and do some things and keep the police doing as much police work as we can. We also, of course, you always care about officer Abab in Goose Bay with homelessness, that's your community resource officer. So, um, uh, when we did the initial budget, um, putting money aside so that we can have that position, and so when the public keeps saying, what are you doing? Well, we didn't, we weren't staff to be able to handle that, um, literally, that's, that's, it's a time-consuming position. Meanwhile, uh, we are applying for a federal cops grant. So, um, I have engaged, um, yet again, our partners at CCD, um, we have a meeting, I believe, Wednesday, with the team, and, um, so they'll be writing that federal justice grant for us, and that's a cops grant. So, again, we're trying to help bring money in to pay for these officers. At this point, you know, taxpayers aren't, you know, paying the full freight, only about sixty percent of, of the public safety budget's even paid for by public safety. So, so we're trying to be very creative, stretch the dollars where we can. And the other thing that I wanted to bring out on that, so your cops, um, the duties, the money, the vehicle. So, so, again, you'll hear more and more about the budget, anytime it comes up, I know the public's listening and like, police officers, you're adding positions? Yeah, we are moving things and we are doing so, but at this point, it's not impacting the budget, and we're, we're utilizing as, as much outside resources as we can, um, in order to address this. So, uh, so, there you have it.
Okay. Yeah. All right, well, we'll see that on the agenda tomorrow night then for approval. Thank you. Looks like we have, um, so we had the, the bills of the city, then the ARPA, and then item C. Oh, cause so these are all under consent calendar here, and then the, so then the next item under the consent calendar is the, um, ODOT perform night work. So this is, we already approved some night work, this is more night work, right? May sixteenth and the eighteenth on page fifty-three, is this where we get to hear from Mr. Dunham?
We'll address that since it requires council approvals for night work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, our ordinance is only allowed for construction between seven AM and six PM with inside-city limits, and it doesn't matter in the zone. ODOT primarily in commercial and industrial districts. Utilizes night paving, that's very common, especially with high-traffic areas in most cities, but they utilize, uh, night paving to perform this in accordance with our ordinance, City Council has to approve it, so they put in a request, and staff has recommended approval.
Okay. Sounds like there's no questions in the council on that, more necessary work that needs to be done, so, um, it doesn't sound like there was any, yes.
I knew you were headed there.
Yeah, I was like, it doesn't sound like there's anything that we need to be pulled out of the consent calendar then, so we, tomorrow night, we could present it as, to adopt it, as presented, unless there's anything that wants, unless there's anything that any council member wants to be moved out separately. Okay, all right, we'll be getting on those then. And then tomorrow night, okay, so we're still in the calendar here, tomorrow night's public comments, well, at this point, anybody on deck yet? And they would have until one o'clock tomorrow?
One o'clock tomorrow to sign up for remote public comment, and then they also have sent a form to be able to.
Before the meeting, so if somebody came in at six fifty-seven tomorrow and filled the form out, they could speak at our meeting and, and in front of us, and we welcome them all, so please do. Then, um, after public comment, we'll have requests for easement, um, access, um, so, looks like we have some information on this on page fifty-four. I know that the, looking, looking here at the information, um, the staff recommendation is really to refer this to the property committee for evaluation, so that they could probably go over it more thoroughly than guessing. And to Mr. City Administrator, um, was there, did you want to highlight something here with this prop, the request for the easement for the access property?
On this one, um, Mr. Conhardt has, um, purchased property and has made requests with the city. At this point, from a staff level, um, we have, uh, held the line and said no. He has a right to take it, counsel, um, in this case, um, in order to make sure it's vetted, it's the staff recommendation that you go ahead and plant it to the property committee. There are several other reasons for the property committee to be anyway. So, uh, I think it would be appropriate that we send it to the committee, uh, evaluate it with, uh, staff, and then, um, then, then the council can come back and make a determination, let's say, so it would be based on the recommendation of the property committee.
Okay, and then the, so there'd be a recommendation for the property committee, back to the council, if then the owner was not happy with that, then that's when they would potentially appeal to the council.
Um, correct, now, you have the right tomorrow, if you want, to approve these, but before, I don't want to, uh, misguide you. If you all want to act on the easement, you can, I'm just letting you know the staff recommendation is a referral.
Okay.
It's up to you, so if you have questions about the easement, you're more than welcome, Ralph and I are here, we'll answer any questions about the request.
I'm comfortable with, well, that would, decision would be tomorrow night, but, yeah.
Can we ask questions now?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to know what cross street.
Right, I was wondering what, what hundred block it is.
That's, that's at Wait and, uh, Oak. It's off of Pine.
Yeah.
So this, this is a piece of property, this actual property committee surplus for sale, uh, circa two thousand ten.
That's the dead end of Oak Street, right?
The dead end, well, it's beyond the dead end of Oak Street, but.
That's where the last.
Where the cul-de-sac off, off of Pine, um, if you actually went down to the end of Pine, this is a property directly east. We surplused it, put it for sale. The city asked for a hundred thousand dollars for that property minimum bid, they received no bids, this was in roughly two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, sometime in that era, primarily because of property, although developable, is expensive, and I'm, I'm familiar with it, because I had several potential buyers contact me when I was a consulting engineer and look at the cost to develop the property, and because Oak Street's only on one side, you're doing full development cost, um, of a street to only access one side, so it doubles your cost in essence in developing the property. So, regardless, it's, it's a developable piece, uh, three to four lots, three pretty easy, possibly four. And the request on this easement is to meander across that property. Well, there's an alley on the west side of this property, and Oak Street on the east side of this particular property, I'm not quite sure why they didn't at least propose to use part of the alley, um, I do understand the terrain on the very south end of it, they would, uh, in order to use that alley or adjacent to it, would have to negotiate part of the, the very south end of our property, but they're, they're basically requesting easement across, I'm not going to say across the middle, but across the easy part, the nice piece of, part of the property, to access a piece of property they purchased.
So, which way is north on this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it seems backward.
It was slightly, yeah, I mean, I can't, what, are these lots, is this what he's trying to access, is these?
Part of the, their south end of our property, but they're, they're basically requesting easement.
North would be, Wait Street's on the north, which isn't labeled, uh, so, the end of Oak Street is a block further north. So Wait Street is this parcel where the start of the line is, that's actually in Wait Street.
Sorry, I had a flying clip.
It's like. So it's the property basically to the south of Kenny? But down, but down Wait where it dead is?
Two blocks, the property they own is actually twenty, this is Twenty-Fifth Street, a little difficult to see, this would be Wait Street, Kenny would be up here.
Right.
And they purchased this property out here, which is, it is developable, it's kind of a ridge top.
So basically, that Wait Street would be where it's marked going this way would be east of, of, correct?
Wait Street runs east-west.
Right now, it just dead ends at, at the, at the timber, right?
Correct, if you come off of Pine, there's a gravel road that's.
There's an alleyway behind those houses that are currently.
On Pine Street.
On Pine.
Correct.
So that you, they want to go down the alley?
Well, there, the easement request is showing about twenty feet off the alley.
Okay.
Which, again, that doesn't, didn't make sense to staff, at least not, why not use the alley to
Right.
to come off the hill, this is what, the reason for this is grave, to come off the hill. You also have, they could come all the way to Oak Street, come down it, they could come down the alley, they could come down Pine Street and get to their property.
Okay.
Obviously, develop, this is the easiest way, I guess, is what I'm saying, this is, this is the easiest path.
Pretty good picture on there.
Okay, okay, so there. So it's down in here.
Yeah, the picture on the screen is way better than this map.
Right.
Can you, can, can you, um, on like Kaylee's screen with the cursor show, because it's what? Can he, does he have access to move his cursor?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Wait Street ends, and where you see the short line of the drawing, the east-west, which is hard to tell north, southeast-west.
Right.
That is Wait Street, which is, you can see there's already improved in gravel off of Pine.
For part of it, yeah.
For the first part of it, there's an alley behind these houses, but they are proposing to actually come across this property to serve this property here. There is some terrain on this last portion, relatively steep off the end of, uh, Pine Street as it exists now. Not terribly bad, but the cross slope, if they were developing Twenty-Fifth, is a little tougher, they could also develop Oak Street and come down and access their property, but they're asking kind of meander across this parcel.
And the parcel that they would want to meander across, who owns that now?
City of North Bend owns this whole wooded area, all the way over to Ash.
No, let me throw this in the mix, didn't we, or didn't the city kind of dedicate that as kind of a greenway for drainage?
The.
Off of, uh, would it be Kenny?
Off of Kenny, you see the alder, the lighter green.
Right.
That's basically the drainage way, and it's, it's a steep slope, um, there's a block and a half in that area.
Right.
Basically, the easterly block is steep slope.
Right.
Sounds like a perfect thing.
Half a block is gentler ground, and I, I invite people to go out and look at it.
I was gonna say, I think it's a perfect thing for the property committee to look at, dig in further. I do appreciate you bringing this up and asking the questions, um, but this is the type of thing I think they could dig into, don't you think? Take a field trip and, yeah.
Looks like need a machete.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot to probably really digest in here, yeah.
It's staff's opinion that where they're asking for their easement is developable, and so they're asking to ruin the ability of the city to sell that property for another developer, for them to have a driveway, and that's the reason staff rejected.
So, if you went down the end of Ash Street and basically turned right, could they access the property that way too?
There's a, about a forty-foot deep canyon.
With a bridge.
You could put a bridge there, yes, but.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, Counselor Richardson's had about three, four questions on this, I'm gonna go down here to Counselor Nordoff to, do you, do you have a question, or do you agree that we should just, uh, bat this to the property committee?
It, it's a quick question, I'm just wondering, are they, are they talking about all ten of these lots here that we're seeing on the?
That's what, drawing, the lots are what they want to develop, correct?
That whole thing, not just one, that whole thing.
The, okay, is that true, Ralph, those are the potential lots that they want to develop?
They, terrain-wise, there's about three lots in the, the northwest corner that's developable.
Okay.
The rest, the remainder of it's a canyon, but they purchased the whole property.
Okay. Property committee. Yeah, I think they need to dig into that, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're on it.
I think so.
Wow, we almost had a binder clip accident.
Oh man, I guess.
See that?
That way a firecracker went off in here. Yeah.
I was, I was gonna say.
I could have had a worth much call plane.
Now you know why you go to prison, why you got that separator.
Yeah.
All right. What's next? Okay, um, so that was five. No, yeah, that was five, number six, so we've got a request from Neighbor Works on cloud, um, for information on page fifty-six of your packet about affordable housing property tax exemption, so I know they have reached out to our city staff, and, um, to your Mr. City Administrator, would you like to kind of explain, is there a better way to say that, that then they just asked us to forgive some of their property taxes at the?
So, in this case, um, uh, they have, uh, sent an official request to the governing body asking for abatement of all property taxes. That property, uh, uh, the majority of it is all, uh, affordable low-income housing. To the agreement, uh, they have the opportunity to bring out, uh, commercial space, uh, on the first floor. Haven't been really that successful, from my knowledge, um, uh, having spoken, but, um, it is in your urban renewal agency district, and so, um, very much like, say, your housing authority, you'll do pilots where you'll get payment lower taxes. It's very much like, uh, fee-to-trust, where you can work out a services agreement. Uh, in this case, um, if you bait it, you'll still be on the hook for all services, um, at that location. So this is really a governing body, um, decision, um, I did ask, um, our, uh, staff to, uh, generate, uh, how much, uh, tax review was, uh, involved, I believe I sent that to the council, I believe.
Was that today?
No, it would have been last week.
I don't think I got it.
We don't, we don't remember that, but doesn't mean it didn't happen.
I, I, I got three emails, uh, that someone's assigned me, but I didn't know. And so, um.
Looking, did it have a dollar amount that we'd be abating on there?
For some reason, I thought it was in the neighborhood of, uh, eight grand, but, uh, let me check real quick.
Sixty-two, yeah, that's eight grand.
There's already, I think, exemptions on some of that.
I was gonna say, that doesn't add up.
Yeah. All right, so.
Screwed.
Oh, my fault, so, um, oh no, that's not right. Thank you, Senator. All right, so, um, on the, um, the one, so the, the main property, um, you have obviously the school districts, all the tax authority, the county, the bonds, all that, city, the urban renewal, uh, so, I'm looking, the education total is just shy of twenty-five hundred. The, uh, county, city, port, uh, URA is, uh, roughly about fifty-one hundred, and then the bonds, Goose County and school board is about five hundred and thirty-four dollars. There's a second amount. Have that amount. Some reason I think we're at total there, yeah, so in all, um, I think that, uh, tax authorities, you're talking about eight thousand total, not just us, um, but all tax authorities. Yeah, because, um, there's another, yeah, here's another piece, which is the education total of about a thousand, then Goose County, us, and URA will pick up two thousand, and then the bonds, two hundred nine, so. You don't have to take action at this time, you can certainly further research it, further contemplate it, discuss it, you can approve it, you can deny it, uh, it's your choice. From my standpoint, I know that they have a brand-new CEO, uh, I know that, um, we've had great conversations, um, a whole lot better than we had in the past, previous. So, um, so, I, I, I would like to see, you know, I've been talking with them about some cooperative efforts, making sure that they address things like their parking, you know, I've talked to them about potential euro on the side of their buildings, so if you're coming in, that's the whole side of the building, see, I'd like to see a nice, or if there's one up there during the holidays, I'd like to see their building decorated with the holidays to protect it without them. So I think that if I can get them to evolve to be what I consider a little bit better committee partner, then, then I wouldn't sway on, on this request, but, um, personally, I don't think we're there yet, but that's, again, my staff.
It's hard for me to think about abating anybody's, yeah.
And just. They have a partial abatement already?
If they're only paying eight hundred dollars for a property, yeah.
So, and just to be clear, so, because in the letter, they speak about Deer Creek, but the, where they're asking for the abatement on the taxes, is it the Northman Hotel Building?
Yeah, I got this, I know where Deer Creek is, where's Deer Creek?
On Monroe, up in Virginia.
Yeah.
That's the only, like.
Do they have a property over there?
Ten apartments.
That's it, I, I thought that was veterans housing.
I did, cool. It is veterans housing.
So, but.
I don't know if they did a cut, fix, or search or replace, because what we, what we think was the hotel, which is that same property that I'm aware of, which you've been dancing about.
I think maybe in the letter here, they're just making a point that when they opened Deer Creek, they had a, there were, there was a huge line of applications, um, for that property, and there's only sixty-eight units there, so they're just talking about the need. So with the history of the Northman Hotel, um, maybe some of you old-timers have some history on that, but.
Would you like to know?
Well, so that was a hotel that, or it was a hotel at one time, and then it was renovated for low-cost housing, and at the time, was there a period that they were abating taxes for like, say, twenty years or something?
It was empty for years.
But I'm just wondering, was there like an original deal that they had a tax abatement for twenty years, and then it's, at some point, they're supposed to be sustainable, and they don't get that anymore?
They must have made a deal somewhere along the line, if they're only got eight grand on the hook, yeah.
I'm sure during the improvements to the building, whatever, they'll say, they have some sort of reduction of property debt.
Right. And I guess my comment is, is that the Northman Hotel is a public-private collaboration between a group of investors that actually paid for the renovation of the hotel, and then they're receiving money from, is it the state?
Bounters and, or, yeah.
For the rent.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, everybody needs to be aware of that. Huh? Right, right, so everybody needs to be aware of that, that there's, you know, I mean, there's investors that are here that are going to be getting a break on their taxes on this also.
Yeah.
So, I mean, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm not saying, well, where the other, but, but that's the whole story, because it would, and, and I guess the good news is, is that that building was in complete disrepair, and they spent, you know, literally millions of dollars to bring it up to, to fire code and to seismic codes.
But there, there's also a lot of government rehabilitation grants.
Correct, so, you know, I mean, yeah, so I mean, it's like.
Because that project was at least, what, twenty-plus years ago, twenty-five years ago, maybe?
No.
No, wasn't that long ago.
At least fifteen, maybe not twenty, at least fifteen and twenty.
But, you know, I mean, and, and like I say, you know, I mean, so they're asking for this basically tax break because they can't seem to get tenants to stay in the lower portion of their building.
That's what I'm surmising, is that, when I, so obviously, prior to the.
It's like a marketing.
Prior to the current CEO, and, and so, I will tell you that there has been, you know, a complete one-eighty on sort of, um, morale and sort of vision and mission with, under the new CEO. And so, on the prior CEO, I mean, you, we were trying to dance with them, trying to get help with, as you recall, the bank rest, uh, facility. And they basically said, nothing you can do with it. Look at what's happening to that building now. Um, and, well, we know, I guess you all know that, it's going to have been a tour, but, but, but we've been there. Uh, part of ours has been there a lot. Um, so, um, so, so during those conversations, um, is when it's like, yeah, um, we, we just haven't been able to lease out and get any of the commercial space that we have rented. So, um, from, there, there's not a lot that I can tell just off tax bills, other than I know they have commercial space and all of the rest would be the load of moderate income, which would be terrible. They obviously know that they're paying taxes, and so they made a request. I don't know if it's just us or across the board, because everything's about dollars and cents. Um, the same thing, uh, right now, we are putting a lot of money into our downtown, and so, you know, um, so, so, uh, before I never feel comfortable coming to even make a recommendation, you know, I want to see them dance a little bit more with us. And, and I've talked to them. Um, I've talked to them initially on the couple, in fact, I've sent them a couple opportunities. Uh, because I do think that mural is very, very important to downtown. Um, I do think that the holiday decorations and, and moving forward with the vision that you all have, uh, for downtown is important. And then I want to make sure that, that, you know, we, we, um, don't have parking issues, um, because is, uh, uh, during COVID, um, that they all existed. And so, um, you know, trying to work through that. And so far, they've been very cooperative, and their relationship isn't awesome. Um, but I need to see sort of the, the rubber hit the road, if you will, on some of these other, what I call, you know, skin in the game, uh, requests.
Personally, I'm not willing to trade eight thousand dollar property taxes for a mural. Eight thousand dollars can be every year that we don't get it.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah, go ahead.
I don't think we were suggesting that, though.
No, I'm saying I'm not, I wouldn't be in support of just because they're gonna put a mural up, maybe put decorations up for Christmas.
They also had an agreement, I think possibly with the county for parking.
Those spaces are, are over.
Is that correct? I, I think I'm correct on that.
Yeah. Interesting enough, uh, we didn't make any agreements over on the purchase of those properties. Um, and so, uh, those, um, parking spaces are still over there on Union Street. And, uh, and, and we have directed them for the time being to be there until it's developed. Um, so as we have talked to them, we, we've addressed that. Again, they've been cooperative. And same thing, you know, I'm not asking, what, what I'm saying is, I, I need good faith as a good partner, meaning it has to be beneficial. Um, we, we are investing a lot of money in our downtown. And, um, right now, part of that pays into the urban renewal. And so, um, that's, that's what's occurring in downtown.
It sounds like we are, um, there's a little bit of a consensus that probably not now. Um, that if the conversation wanted to, you know, continue o, to be open and maybe discuss a little other point, but like, based off of this letter, it, there, there's, there's nothing in here that says, this is what we're gonna do for the city of North Bend if these are abated. Like there's, you know, if they said, we can build this and provide more housing there, but it's nothing to me as clear of like, what they would be doing with the eight thousand dollars. And I saw Councilor Noroff had her hand up.
Uh, yes, the address that's noted, the Oxford Mead, that's on the next block south of my block. On the other side of the street, and to my knowledge, that is all like single-family housing unless someone who owned it sold it as.
The sixteen forty-four me.
Yeah, sixteen, what, I mean, what the heck? I, i, if you look at it, it looks like single-family, un, unless it's been somehow broken down to a, a daylight basement situation of being an apartment downstairs and then the upstairs. Somehow involved with Neighbor Works on Quahog. I don't know, but that's kind of stunning.
Sixteen, yeah, that would be, that would be a, a two-apartment building.
Yeah. They were, what, there's a number of projects where they read that property, so.
Well, is that an investment? I, is that then, that it's not the owners um, living there? It's, it's rentals? Are they for sure rentals? Or is it the owner with, that somehow has, has gotten, um, assistance from Neighborhood, Neighbor Works on Quahog? Do we know?
I'm at a loss. I'm only aware of just the one.
Counselor.
Counselor Lee, Leeson has some insight here.
Maybe. Uh, I think the Oxford, uh, I, they might be talking about the Oxford House, uh, which is a, not a single family. It's, it's set up for like a multi-fan, uh, group type home type setting. We had some connection with that as far as my work. Um, so it might be, I'm guessing that's the, the, the same thing, because we're not too many, I would imagine, in that area. Um, under that name. I don't think this letter says enough. I, I kind of agree with you that I'd like to know what it is. One, it says Oregon statute provides property tax exemptions to nonprofits that own low-income commodity property of more than one-half of taxing entities of the property decree. So who else are they asking? That would be nice to know. Who's the list of the other half that they're, they're going for? What are they gonna do with the tax exemption? Like, what money are they gonna put? Because I do agree, housing is a major issue. How does this address that? And, and I think that this letter, while it's a nice letter, and I understand what they're trying to get, I don't understand the reason why they're trying to get it. And I, I don't know that, I think I can get, kick it down the road until we have more information, because this doesn't tell us.
Or have presentation.
Right, yeah, something, I'd like some.
Do you have any other insight? Um, so it, I don't, I don't believe there's like a staff recommendation for this line item here, was there? You, you verbally said it.
Making one. Um, we, we knew that the letter had come in, um, as I, uh, recall, the letter came in, you know, while I was on vacation. Um, so it was waiting when I came back. And so, uh, um, we felt best because it was a council expectation that, uh, we put it before you. Um, I will tell you, um, as I said, Steph wasn't ready to make a recommendation, and we're not comfortable moving forward with the request at this time, for, for the reasons previously stated. Um, deals are made. Um, it's, this is almost like you're coming back to sweeten it. Well, again, how are you going to be with the mission, business? You're spending a lot of money in downtown to address light. How's it going to help with, so as I said, I've mentioned multiple projects that I think will help further mission. But again, you know, this is just simply a request to abate, um, additional taxes that they're already paying.
Sounds like we have a consensus from the council that tomorrow night, we would most likely hear a motion from a counselor saying, uh, you know, that they would make a motion probably to not move forward at this time. But we would probably give you direction as step, you know, staff direction to continue the conversations to see if there is some sort of something that would be, um, good for both parties and could increase housing. But based off of what we're looking at here, like, not at this time, probably where we'll be headed tomorrow night is what I'm guessing.
Right.
That's for me.
Okay. All right. So let's see, number neighbor, okay, that takes us to seven, which is, um, purchase of a tag axle and accessories for wastewater sludge truck. That sounds like a Rothdam item here on page fifty-eight. Ten thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, huh? That's how much.
Madam Mayor and members of City Council, again, this is relatively straightforward. Uh, our sludge trucks nineteen ninety-nine, and the tank's getting pretty thin. Um, we looked at, originally anticipated budgeting, and you put a new sludge truck in there, but the chassis itself's in pretty good condition. Um, as Pat knows, you buy a new truck today, you go from eight miles to the gallon to two mile, two and a half miles to the gallon. Uh, so we looked into, and with our sludge truck, the tank's about an eighty thousand dollar item. A chassis is a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand. You meld the two together. When we talk to the tank installers, uh, we are currently on an overload as, as a trucks outfitted, um, which is legal for public entities. You can get an exemption to overload the truck. They, however, the two tank installers we discussed with won't put a tank on a overloaded truck, right? So it required a tag axle. We got pricing to put a tag axle on, and this is an anticipation of putting a new tank in it. Soon, we don't have a budget to do so yet, but it's in next year's budget. So at this point, uh, and they said they could put it on, or locally, we could have it put on, and the prices are relatively the same. Uh, so we got a price to get a new tag axle for legally overloaded truck, although it is legal, because we have an exemption, um, in anticipation of a future improvement of that same sludge truck. Therefore, before you is an ask for the expense to put a tag axle on that vehicle.
Kim, any questions? Did you, did you have, no, no questions on this one?
Well, you don't wanna like tear up the road.
That's, that's the purpose of spreading your load. I agree, but it's mostly state highway, you know, it's the bio-solid site. Then we drive through Coos Bay and, and State Highway, two forty.
But the, the, you know, to be honest with you, a tag axle does relieve a lot of the pressure off of the other axles, so you'll get more life out of the.
The chassis itself.
Truck itself, yeah. Cause it's not like max, maxed out constantly.
Is this your next item as well on the agenda, number eight, to authorize to pay the D E Q waste discharge permit?
It is. Very simply, we pay annually for our right to discharge our effluent into Coos Bay. And since it's above our authorization level, um, there was a minor error. They had us as eleven thousand, four hundred and seventeen population, which will make roughly a two hundred dollar adjustment to our permit out of the seventeen thousand dollars. That's pretty minor. D E Q got back to me and said they were sending us a new invoice. So it'll be in that neighborhood of two hundred dollars less. But since it's above staff's authorization to pay the permit, we're bringing it to City Council to approve the payment of our annual N P D S permit to the state of Oregon.
Okay.
I wish it was that easy, just write a check for everybody else.
Remember, we just went through a whole new permit process, so.
Hey, didn't get there today.
All right, thank you. And then the next, the next item, number nine, is authorization to contract with Pay, Paleo West for historical context statements. This is on page sixty-three.
So as part of the city's process to become a C L G, uh, certified local government, we basically have to perform some studies and identify historical properties, um, in order to maintain our C L G status. So it was a, a little bit of the carrot and stick act. Here is, uh, if you want to remain a C L G, and we'll fund half of it. Uh, you need to do a historical context study and provide that to us. So the state's paying for half of it, which granted still means ten thousand, a little over ten thousand dollars to us. Uh, we received one proposal, put it out to multiple entities. Uh, the proposal we received was in budget, or at our estimated budget. And again, this is something that's required through SHIPO in order to maintain our C L G status.
Okay. That question?
Yes, please.
Councilor Noroff, yes.
Could you refresh my memory on what benefits the C L G status brings us? Cause I'm, I've forgotten, I guess.
What it does is makes us primarily the, the benefit we receive besides getting an R historical community and, and have an ability for people who want to develop and register their property to have grants available to them. It, the C L G itself is, like I said, a little bit of a carrot and a stick act, because we have to proceed in a certain manner, have four meetings a year, have a board oversee it. Have to develop historic property studies. Uh, beyond that, it's an avenue to other grants, really is what the benefit to the city itself is, not only for the private property owner. Um, they can apply if their property's listed and receive funds. Again, there's a big, bit of a carrot and a stick there too, because you have to maintain the historical character. But it opens avenues, uh, for other potential grant opportunities, and that's really the benefit to the city itself, not I'm not poo-pooing the historic community. I, I am saying that. The other avenues that it opens by being a certified local government, um, in relation to historic properties provides other opportunities, which hopefully, in receiving those things, um, allow us, and it did already, part of our archaeological study, which, for Fairwood Park, was based on our C L G, which we received thirty-seven thousand dollars for, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, that takes us to, let's see here. Is that number? That was nine. And so then we would have action if needed for many executive sessions, but we don't have any scheduled, I believe. Uh, we'll have a city administrator's report. I know Counselor Gall does have a committee report from the Fire Committee, correct?
No, it's from the Coos Bay Urban Renewal.
Or from the Coos.
Coos County.
Coos County Urban Renewal, okay. So he'll have a report on that. Um, any other, okay, we'll have any other committee reports, whatever council comments at this time. Do we know if there's anything scheduled for other business? Not at this time. And then, and then we adjourn our meeting. So let's go back and look at our agenda for tonight. So, um, a straight-forward work, uh, or a, a city council meeting for tomorrow. Um, number four on our agenda is public comments. We do have, I don't believe there's anybody online, but we have some people here in person, correct? Say it again?
You have one in front of you.
Yep. So that, for the in-person. So, all right, let me go ahead and find my notes here. If I can.
Boy, that's gonna be hard not to do.
Okay, um, all right. So for, this brings us to our public comment portion of the evening. And we always do like to thank people, um, our citizens for joining us and participating in public comment. And the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak, and that always, um, is the same and consistent. It doesn't matter how many people are in the room or online. Three minutes is the three minutes, um, for fairness and consistency and to comply with open meeting laws. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in order to comply with urban, Oregon open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue with the counselors and mayor, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and recorder are taking notes, um, of any action needed. So at this time, we have, it looks like I've got one person signed up. This is Dale, um, Car, Carstetter. And if you want to come forward, we do have a microphone here, um, at the table. If you want to come forward for the public comment. Um, you pull it in close to you, and we should be able to hear you well. And, uh, when you're ready to begin, we'll have our city recorder, recorder to start the timer.
Mister Milliron and Mister Dylan, you claimed on the April eleven work session that we owned to the alley center line. I just gave the mayor and counselors of a copy of my land survey. Our property ends at the south edge of the alley, not the center line of the alley. The survey has been registered at the county courthouse, is not hearsay or opinions. We also submitted two pictures of the alley. You will notice four of the five properties do not meet city ordinances or do meet city ordinance. The fifth property, the Shireman property, does not meet two of the ordinances. It's overgrown. It's used as a storage for personal properties. It sure looks like Mister Milliron and Mister Dunham are giving the property only preferential treatment. We have we have complained over the last year, uh, about the boat and the brush problem in the alley. It has been the org, in, ignored by the city staff. It's a growing problem, and it continues to this day. We have lived at this address for forty-two years, and the alley has worked well as long as the city has enforced their ordinances. This alley is a public right. This alley is a public right-of-way for over a hundred and ten years. It has been used as such. This sub, this is not a subdivision. The alley and streets were platted and accepted by the city when it was incorporated. You would think Mister Milliron and Mister Dunham, with degrees, would be able to read and understand a simple plot plan. And a simple survey. It would be nice for the, it would be nice if they read the city ordinance and enforced it. If you have looked at my survey, can you explain to me how I own half that alley? That's my comment.
Alright, thank you for your comment.
Is, is there any questions?
It's not a time for us to engage with you, but we do appreciate your comments.
When do I get my hearing date on this?
I will ask our city recorder what the next steps are.
There's not a hearing date, Madam Mayor and Council. There was no violation on this property. There are violations on this property. If, if we were to go down the road, but this property did not receive an notice of violation, therefore, they don't have any appeal rights. There was a notice of violation on the joint property. We worked with that property. They would have had the appeal right. So in order for the applicant to have an appeal right. They actually had to have been the target of the notice of violation.
Do you mean, do you mean to tell me that we haven't filed anything?
Coming and giving your comment, but the, that time period is over now. I appreciate you coming and participating in public comments, but your time is over now.
You're, you're denying me my right as a citizen.
I'm gonna, you can come back for public comment tomorrow night if you choose, but at this time, I'm gonna go ahead.